Calling to order the Monday, February 26th, special meeting of the 37th Council of the City of Berkeley. Ms. Boucher, would you please call the roll?
Mayor Pro Tem Baker.
Here.
Councilmember Blanchard.
Here.
Councilmember Gavin.
Here.
Councilmember Henon.
Here.
Councilmember Stedman. And Mayor Turbrack.
Here. First order of business is the approval of tonight's agenda. Is there a motion to approve tonight's agenda?
Motion approved.
Support.
Motion approved by Mayor Pro Tem with support from Councilmember Blanchard. Any additions, corrections, or changes? Seeing none, Ms. Boucher, would you please call the roll on the agenda?
Blanchard?
Yes.
Gavin?
Yes.
Henon?
Yes.
Baker?
Yes.
Turbrack?
Yes. Everybody, please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, we have reached the citizens' comments portion of our evening. You may present your thoughts on issues that are not included on tonight's agenda. Councilmembers will not engage you in discussion, but if your concern needs to be addressed by a member of city staff or Department of the city, please sign your name on the sheet provided on the clerk's table. You may speak on an agenda item when it is being considered. When you come to the microphone, please state your name and city of residence. Okay, nobody coming to the microphone. We will move on to our regular agenda. Ms. Boucher, would you please read the item on our regular agenda?
Presentations matter reviewing applications for council vacancy.
Okay. At the last council meeting, we outlined a process to fill the vacant council seat. Involves an ad hoc committee, pending the number of applications. We did have nine applicants for the vacancy, and the subcommittee then met to get us to where we are today. The ad hoc committee was composed of Mayor Pro Tem Baker, Councilmember Stedman, and the newest council member, Councilmember Gavin. Very similar in the same makeup for the previous ad hoc committee when we did this not too long ago. Committee was tasked with reviewing the application and giving feedback based on the criteria that we discussed at the last council meeting and came to consensus on in terms of the process and the procedure and how this was going to play out. And now we've come to the special meeting today where we're going to allow the six candidates recommended by the ad hoc committee to give a brief little introduction, talk about their vision, what drove them to apply, and what they see for the future of the City of Berkeley. Again, the reality of the situation is we had nine qualified applicants, nine folks who wanted to be involved in the city. We had to work that to a workable number. We did have a tie. The goal was, again, five, just like last time, but we did have a tie, so we have invited all six to come and speak today. I sincerely hope that nobody will be dissuaded. Again, the reality is we're at six right now and only one spot available, so there will be five folks, unfortunately, who won't be able to serve at this time. But we certainly want everyone to stay engaged and to get involved and to be involved in the city in any way possible. Based on the committee evaluations, as I mentioned, I invited six applicants to come and speak out to the residents tonight. Those six applicants are Sue Sitraro, Bridgette Dean, Natalie Price, Charlene Conratt, Chuck Terrell, and Jessica Lombreras. At this point, we are just going to go through in that same order, call each of the applicants up. They'll have an opportunity to say whatever they would like to say for a few minutes. I will be a little more liberal with the time restrictions today as opposed to the last meeting. But that being said, we want to keep all of our comments to about four to five minutes so that we keep things fair in terms of the process and what we followed in the past. Before we do that, are there any questions, comments for the council? Again, we've all agreed on this process. We spoke at length about this process last meeting. And with that, I will invite Ms. Sue Sitraro. Come on down.
Hello, everyone. Just if you don't know me, my name is Sue Sitraro. I have been a Berkeley resident for almost 23 years. My daughter is a graduate of Berkeley High School, and you may see her around town. She works at one of the businesses. A little background, I have a bachelor's degree in management. I have an MBA specializing in international business, and I am in the banking industry. I'm a trust administrator, which basically means I take care of other people's money. So I understand about being a fiduciary and the high standards you're held to. Community involvement is very important to me, so you may have seen me around at various events. I'm very committed to Berkeley, and I'm involved in numerous groups and organizations. And I chose each group because the people in those groups are dedicated to Berkeley. They love Berkeley, and they want nothing more than to make Berkeley better and enrich the residents' lives. While putting on the events in Berkeley with my groups, I do encounter all age groups and demographics, from the little kids, from the juniors when we do Breakfast with the Bunny, and all the way up to the Holiday Lights Parade. We, and different members of my groups, are in all age brackets, so I think I have a good understanding of each group's needs. When we do put on the various events, like the Holiday Lights Parade, we had to work with a lot of groups within the city: Public Works, Public Safety, the Chamber of Commerce, volunteer groups, corporate sponsors, and Parks and Rec. The reason I applied for this city council position is that I feel my background gives me a different perspective. It adds diversity and it complements the people who are already on it. I might be able, like I said, to offer a different perspective, maybe identify areas of improvement and offer suggestions. And I feel I have a good grasp of the city's issues that they're facing now and in the future. I've attended many city council, planning commission meetings over the last 18 months. And if chosen, I have some goals. I call it the three E's: engagement, education, and empowerment. Community engagement is very important, and now so more than ever. And I feel at times the city has struggled with this. There's three bond initiatives on the ballot in November. It's very important for the city, and it's also very polarizing for some of the residents. Engagement is important because I would like to listen to the residents, regardless of their positions on the issues, understand their concerns, ask questions. And if we're not hearing from a wide cross-section of residents, we need to ask why. Because we don't want to interpret silence as agreement when a lot of times it means just the opposite. Education. Answer the residents' questions. Make information available timely, which I know Matt has done a good job of updating the website and is holding some open houses. But we never want to hear from a resident that they didn't vote for something because they didn't know about the issue or they didn't get enough information because they couldn't make a decision, so they didn't vote on it. Also, in addition to the bonds, there's the redevelopment-ready community certification, which is on the horizon, which could be actually a great thing for the city, but it involves a lot of community input. A lot. Much more than the legal minimum requirement and much more than we've ever done in the past. Now's the time to engage the residents, work together with the groups, and I would like to be part of that and work with each of you to make Berkeley better for the next generations. Thank you.
Thank you, Sue. Bridgette?
Oh, okay. Good evening. My name is Bridgette Dean, and I'm here because I want to be appointed to fill the vacancy currently on city council. I have a Bachelor of Arts in Psychology and a Master of Social Work, both from the University of Michigan. As a practicing social worker, I worked in community mental health as well as private practice. Approximately 14 years ago, I decided to venture into the business world, opening my knit shop, Have You Any Wool, right here in Berkeley, making me a resident and a Berkeley business owner as well. I've been actively involved in our city, serving on the board of the Greater Berkeley Chamber of Commerce, and I currently am the vice chair of the Berkeley Downtown Development Authority. While on the chamber board, I was the liaison one summer to the Cruz Fest. I was also the recipient of the Businessperson of the Year award in 2007. While serving on the Downtown Development Authority, I was on the Robina Project Subcommittee, which is one of the catalytic projects under the city's master plan. I was also on the search committee for the Downtown Development Authority Executive Director, which resulted in the hiring of Vivian Carmody. I currently serve on the Design Guidelines Subcommittee, the Public Art Subcommittee, and the Wayfinding Subcommittee. These committees inspire me because they allow me to be part of a thoughtful process while tapping into my creative sense. My community service extends beyond the City of Berkeley. I co-founded a 501(c)(3) charitable nonprofit called Knit Michigan. Knit Michigan is an independent organization dedicated to supporting cancer patients and their families by making, collecting, and donating comfort items, such as chemo caps and lap blankets, to be distributed throughout the state of Michigan. I know that Berkeley residents have benefited directly from this effort through the Rose Cancer Center at Beaumont Hospital, and I feel blessed to have been able to help and serve in this way. Each position that I've held has honed my listening, communication, and problem-solving skills. I lead a team at my business every day. I know how to make a business run, and I know how to make the trains run on time. Being a Berkeley resident and business owner gives me a unique perspective, which I believe will allow me to serve thoughtfully and effectively on city council. We have challenges and great opportunities in the City of Berkeley. We have roads and sewers that need to be fixed. The city infrastructure and investments need to be protected. We have an exceptionally talented staff of city employees and a very supportive business community. Our residents are passionate about our hometown. Berkeley is moving forward. Our schools are top-notch. Our city is safe and walkable, and we have neighborly charm. These are just a few of the reasons why my husband and I chose to live in Berkeley. We have an incredible group of volunteers made up of residents who are the backbone of many city events. If you don't already know this, I'm pretty passionate about our library. There are so many enriching programs giving our residents the opportunity to gather, to learn, and to enjoy each other's company. In my opinion, the momentum that our city has and the positive vibe that can be felt throughout the city is due to a city council working together in a caring and civil way. The spirit of cooperation has a trickle-down effect, touching all city departments, volunteer groups, and residents. I have a track record of involvement, commitment, and service to the City of Berkeley and beyond. It would be an honor to add my progressive business knowledge to the existing range of skills already on council. I am respectful, thoughtful, and open to opposing viewpoints and meaningful dialogue. I will be an independent voice on city council. My commitment is to the city I love. Thank you for the opportunity and your consideration.
Thank you, Bridgette. Natalie Price.
Mayor Turbrack, council members, fellow residents. When I stood up here and made my speech a few months ago, I talked about why I wanted to apply for the open spot on city council. I talked about how happy I am that my family found our forever home in a small, caring community. Today, I want to focus on the skills and experience I can bring to city council. First of all, I am a stay-at-home mom. Yes, I do have a very part-time position, teaching a parent-taught class at the community center that my three-year-old also attends. But if I'm appointed to city council, I will continue my work as a volunteer for Parks and Rec, and I will no longer be a city employee. My primary role as an at-home caregiver will not change, and I believe that this role provides a valuable perspective. I am uniquely aware of the challenges that full-time caregivers face, and I have responded to them through my work with the Moms Club of Berkeley, Backyard Playroom, and my work at the community center. Supporting the caregivers of our youngest residents has been my main focus since I moved here, and I believe it's a crucial investment in our city's future. I look forward to adding this perspective to the voices on city council. Before I became a stay-at-home mom, I was a professional educator. I taught high school English, and I helped my students design service learning projects. I love bringing out the potential in others by matching their unique skills and interests with the needs in their communities. I implemented an extensive service project here in Berkeley when I brought together Moms Club, Public Safety, the community center, City Hall, the library, Public Works, Backyard Playroom, and a local business to help raise over $20,000 for local... $20,000 diapers. For local families in need. This is the kind of collaboration and teamwork that our city needs as we face the challenges and opportunities ahead. And my experience as an educator gives me the skills to get this work done. Before I became a professional educator, I became a highly-trained researcher and expert communicator. I graduated with departmental honors from Vassar College and earned a master's degree in English Studies from the University of Exeter in the United Kingdom. When I face an important decision, I gather the facts, talk to experts, and ultimately implement the best practices available. If appointed to council, I plan to help resuscitate the communications board so that we can explore and use technology in order to better solicit feedback from all residents as well as effectively deliver useful information to all residents. For example, effective communication will be key as we prepare to vote on the road village and bond proposals in November. City council needs to make its case that it's spending the taxpayers' money wisely while acting in the long-term interest of both the residents and the small businesses that make our community so desirable. Ultimately, what motivates me to apply to city council is the future of our children. We came here for the great schools, walkable downtown, and phenomenal public safety. We fell in love with the caring staff and vibrant programs at the library and community center, and we found our village and our friends, neighbors, and the small business owners who connect with us as individuals rather than simply customers. This is the Berkeley that I want to protect, improve, and preserve so that my kids and their kids will want to call Berkeley home. The city is their future, and I want to make it the best it can possibly be. Thank you.
Thank you, Natalie. Charlene Conratt.
Good evening, Your Honor. Thank you for the opportunity to introduce myself to the council and to the community members tonight for the first time. Others have had the opportunity to do that a couple of times, but I really appreciate being here. My name is Charlene Conratt, and my husband, Mike, and I have been residents of Berkeley for 38 years. We purchased our first home on Franklin in 1980, choosing to move from Royal Oak to Berkeley because of exceptional school district and remarkable city services. After 16 years on Franklin, we moved four blocks north to Belverley Boulevard, where we currently reside. We raised two sons, who are Berkeley High School graduates, and we are looking forward to retirement right here in Berkeley. I am a past member of the Junior Women's Club, having participated in the decorating of the gazebo, the hot chocolate, and all of the wonderful bunny things at the city, the community center. So I've had a chance to do that, as well as I was part of the Berkeley Beautification Committee. I have served as an American Red Cross volunteer. And while a stay-at-home mother, I volunteered at the school on a regular basis and was elected as a leader and officer in the PTA organizations of Rogers, Anderson, and Berkeley High. I'm currently what my neighbors refer to me as, the block organizer. I initiate the block parties, progressive dinners, occasional movie nights, and for the last 18 years, I've been providing my neighbors with the supplies for Christmas Eve luminaries. A couple of summer ago, I organized the neighbors to clean up and edge the two medians on our block. As a 25-year employee of the Berkeley schools, I've had the opportunity to engage with many community members: parents, students, educators, custodians, vendors, and Berkeley's finest, our public safety officers. I'm currently the secretary to the principal of Berkeley High School. I've worked at Burton Elementary as the secretary to the principal there as well, and worked for 10 years at the administrative offices, reporting directly to the deputy superintendent of Finance and Operations, Mr. Gallagher. My duties included processing payroll, the purchasing of all supplies and services for the district, as well as preparing and evaluating requests for proposal documents, cooperative bids, and contracts. Integrity, fairness, and a good stewardship of public funds have always been very important to me. My responsibilities also included securing community space district-wide for the municipalities and school activities. For many years, I've had the pleasure of working with Scott Genix at Community Ed, Annette Buescher, and her predecessor, Mary Hughes, here at City Hall. That relationship continues today as it is still one of my many responsibilities at Berkeley High. As a school employee, I'm an MEA member and have served in union leadership as well, providing me the opportunity to be involved in contract negotiations with the Berkeley School District Management. Now to my volunteer work. I'm an active member and leader of my church, currently serving as the chairperson of its Board of Trustees, which also means that I have a place at the church council. The trustees are responsible for a historic building in downtown Royal Oak, as well as the pastor's home, its financial assets, and other properties. Under my leadership, we recently sold multiple church properties in the excess of $1 million. With the sale and development of that property, I participated in several community meetings to help bridge neighborhood concerns with the property developer. As trustee's chairperson, I was actively involved in the development and implementation of a multimillion-dollar renovation project for the downtown church location. This renovation project is near completion. My responsibilities are coming to an end, and I'm excited to turn my focus, my energy, and dedication here in my hometown. My extensive work and volunteer experience provides me with a unique skill set that will bring a new and fresh perspective to the issues facing the council and the City of Berkeley. As an active listener, I'm open-minded and have practical experience in bringing people of opposing views into conversation together to solve problems. Berkeley, like other cities, face difficult and challenging issues. Directives from the state and aging infrastructure, legacy costs are just a few issues that will need to be solved. However, with challenges come very exciting opportunities. My plan is to work diligently towards a bright and secure future for the residents and the city. I envision that the exceptional city services will continue to be maintained, that new businesses and developments will be welcomed, and that we will have safe sidewalks, and I will see a new community center and an updated city hall. Thank you for your time this evening. I look forward to the additional conversations we will have regarding my possible contributions to this great little city, Berkeley, the place we all call home. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, Charlene. Chuck Terrell.
Thank you. I have lived in Berkeley for 30 years now. Spent 24, 26 on the tree board. And a lot of what we did on the tree board, we started doing outreach, talking to residents, visitors about trees. Along the way, I became, through Michigan State Extension, an ash tree, an Emerald Ash Bore Town Crier and Scout. I got extensive training in identifying ash trees and identifying infestations. Talked to people, their private trees, plus all the city trees. We also became, through SACRA and SACWA, there was a program that Lilly and Dean put together called Treekeepers, so I became a treekeeper as well. We did a lot of fun projects when 11 Mile was going to be rebuilt. I inventoried all the trees on 11 Mile, so four miles of 11 Mile did both sides. And we shared those results with Oak Park and with Huntington Woods about the trees along 11 Mile. So a lot of outreach, a lot of talking to people, dealing with the tree board. So that was a good time while it lasted, but it had to come to a close. At the last city council meeting, Mr. Henon said that if anybody should apply to this opening who hadn't applied before, that his first question would be, "Where were you then?" I hope you get your answers. I'd like to expand on that question and ask it in a little different way. Where were you in June and July and before that, while other people were out circulating petitions to get on the ballot? I got 120 signatures. I talked to and listened to probably 300 or 400 people in order to get that done. A lot of things that happen in Berkeley, there's people from Royal Oak and Huntington Woods, Oak Park, even Troy that show up. So I had interesting conversations and listened to them. It's amazing how much everybody has a similar issues of roads, sewers, and water. They did not have... They did not talk much about building community centers, pools, or ice arenas. Where their focus more was, was how can we afford to keep what we've got? How can we afford to keep operating them? Somebody from Huntington Woods said, "For as often as we go to the pool, we just listen go to Red Oaks." Different perspective I hadn't even thought of before a person brought that up. Royal Oak is dealing with City Hall. They've been dealing with a new City Hall for a long, long time, and I don't want to get into that, and hopefully our City Hall reconstruction won't get into anything even close. My background, my work background includes a lot of budget work. Many of the budgets that I worked on, and even my personal budgets for my own staffs, dwarf the city budget, so I can do that. I have had some work experience in putting together municipal bond issues, so I'm a little bit familiar with that. A lot of work that I did, it was process, process documentation, process improvement, to use the word lean. And lean is moved out of the manufacturing realm and works very, very well with services. The city provides services, so lean can work there as well. As we always said, if the process isn't documented, it's not a process. So we need to work on that. I've served on several boards over the years. I know the strategic and supervisory role that a board or a council has as opposed to the paid staff and how you're supposed to work with a paid staff. And also, worked a lot extensively in these board services with volunteers and volunteer committees. But all that being said, we also want to encourage and support whistleblowers. Whistleblowers have, in my experience, brought forth many important issues, and oftentimes it had to go around the established reporting structure. One of my bugaboos lately has been commissions, boards, departments. You've got to follow your rules. You've adopted rules, they're established. You need to document your processes, but once all that's established, you've got to follow them. No preferential treatment for anybody. You've got to treat everybody the same. If it's a builder, a developer, a resident, it doesn't matter. Everybody gets treated the same. Failure to follow the documented processes, failure to follow that results in lawsuits. No other two ways about it. And when instances of malfeasance, if you will, are brought forth, it needs to be investigated. It needs to be investigated and acted upon very quickly. It needs to be hours and days, not weeks and months. It has to happen soon. One of the things that was talked about... One of the things that we talked about, that was talked about at the last meeting, and one of the grading criteria was diversity. You probably correctly guessed me on gender. Your guess on ethnicity may be wrong. We won't go into that, but it may be wrong. Mr. Mayor, you mentioned diversity in all regards, in all respects. What I bring is a diversity in ideas and a diversity in thoughts. I am not part of anybody's club or party or any of that. I am nonpartisan, as this is all supposed to be. I don't envy your decision that you have to make. You've got a good crop of candidates here. You had a good crop last time as well. I have unique experiences and a unique perspective that I bring. One of the things that I absolutely cherish in this whole wide world is a linked endorsement that I got, and it was from somebody who said, "You know what? We don't agree on anything. Man, Chuck, we don't agree on much of anything at all, but we're polite. He can engage with me even though he disagrees. We can have civil discussions even though we disagree." And I cherish that. I mean, I've got hundreds of endorsements and things, but that is the one that really says more to me than anything else. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, Chuck. Jessica Lambres.
Hi. I'm really excited to be here. I'm a new resident to Berkeley. I've been here for two years. A really great, inspiring speeches tonight. Honorable City Council Mayor Turbrack and Berkeley neighbors, it's an honor to be here today as a finalist for the open position on City Council. I feel privileged to be here with my fellow finalists. Our community is great because of the time everyone here spends volunteering and serving. My background is in community organizing. I worked in the legislature for several years, traveling around the state to build understanding of how state and local government affect citizens day-to-day. I currently work for the Michigan Education Association, the state's largest union of public school employees, during doing similar work in support of strong schools for our children and our educators. In fact, I spend my career helping other people use their voice and become active at the local level, much like those in the audience here today. With the vacancy, I felt it was my duty to practice what I preach and get involved. I moved my family to Berkeley a little over two years ago. I bought my first home here at Sunny Knoll, 1996 Sunny Knoll Avenue, and it was a proud moment for a few reasons, but mostly because I had spent the previous five years of my career moving my family across the state for work, and it was time to settle somewhere so my then-second grader could have stability at home and at school. Berkeley has provided that atmosphere and that some. When I think of why I applied for this open seat, I immediately thought about how, in a short time, here in Berkeley, Berkeley became our home. Just a couple examples of Berkeley nice experiences for myself and my family. Our first day moving, and our neighbor walked over with her young daughter and their dog and welcomed us. My son and his friends ride their bikes everywhere after school together. When I bought furniture that was too big to move into my front door, my neighbor next door walked over without us asking and helped us move everything in. My neighbor across the street is my insurance person. My neighbor next door helped us bring home a puppy for a very special Christmas. And my after-school babysitter is a Berkeley High School student, and our mom is a teacher in my child's school. We walk to Frosty Freeze almost every day over the summer, and we often run into friends at restaurants around town, friends who also chose to move to Berkeley in the past few years and start their families and their lives. I bring these events up because I believe that at the very basis of my purpose, on the very basis of my purpose and everyone's purpose on council, is to represent my fellow neighbors and taxpayers to the best of my ability because they take care of me and my family. I am grateful for the many years of service that Mr. Kadekko put into Berkeley and this council. I think it's time for new voices of the community to stand up in his absence and serve with integrity. There is a special opportunity in this vacancy to build new relationships and trust with a fresh face looking to bring people together. That is what I bring to the table today and hopefully into the future, building upon the many years of tradition and success Berkeley has. Thank you.
Okay. I want to thank the finalists for one, coming today and for speaking so passionately and eloquently. It is obvious that you all certainly care deeply about the city, and we are grateful for you in applying for this. Certainly will not be a -- or will be a very difficult decision, sorry. The appointment will be made at the next council meeting, the March 5th council meeting. The process will follow the same process that we used last time when Councilmember Gavin was appointed. We also discussed that at the last council meeting, and it seemed to be agreed upon. We had consensus on that as well. In the interim, council members may reach out to the applicants to get to know folks a little bit better, to hear a little bit more about your perspective, your vision for the city, and really to have a more casual conversation. I do not anticipate those, at least mine do not, I guess I can't speak for anybody else, to be a formal interview-grilling kind of setting, but there are some questions, certainly, and good conversation that will certainly be had, so don't be surprised if council members reach out to you and ask if you can spare a few minutes to maybe grab a cup of coffee or just talk over the phone. Okay? Are there any comments or questions from council at this point? Are there any comments or questions from anybody in the audience? Okay. Mayor Protem.
Thank you, Your Honor. I just wanted to again echo your comments about the quality of the candidates, the applicants that we've seen. Incredible talent, each and every one of the folks that spoke today, and even those that didn't quite make the cut, brought tremendous creativity and energy and experience to the table. So I think we, as a city, are very fortunate to have such talent out there, and indeed, this will be a difficult decision for us because as much talent as there is out there, we just have one seat open at the moment. So it'll be an interesting week. Again, my gratitude to everybody for participating in the process, advocating passionately on behalf of the city, and stepping up to try to help move things forward. Thanks.
Thank you. Okay. With that, we will close the presentation, and I believe we have reached the end of our agenda. Ms. Boucher?
Yes, ma'am.
With that, then I will ask for a motion to adjourn.
Motion to adjourn.
Moved to adjourn by Councilmember Henon with support from Councilmember Stedman. Ms. Boucher, would you please call the roll?
Gavin?
Yes.
Henon?
Yes.
Stedman?
Yes.
Baker?
Yes.
Blanchard?
Yes.
And Turbrack?
Yes. February 26th meeting, special meeting, has been adjourned.